The Will community school district December 13th, 5:30, 2024, 2025 district calendar hearing. Called to order roll call joy please. Tim Barrett.
Linda Duncan.
Here.
Tom Fitzer.
Here.
Rob Metzger. Carol Wayne.
Here.
All right, presentation of the proposed calendar which.
Yep, you can see the calendar that was online.
Twenty eight.
Yep, it mirrors the year's calendar for the most part and be the second time since the legislature changed the start date to August 23rd. Unfortunately falls on Friday, but we've done it before. That's when we'll do it again this fall. And you only, there's always a couple of tweaks. I know I've gone over this, so I don't want to repeat it. But parent teacher conferences, we're going Wednesday, Thursday, the first week, and then just Wednesday, the second week. Yeah, obviously I'll let you prefer that because sound Thursday after school. I got a three day weekend and it starts at 3:15 versus 7 o'clock. That's really what it comes down to, but nothing else changed. First number of hours, et cetera, on that. You can see we've got 41.1 hours above the state requirement. The reason we do that is our calendar is in hours, but our teacher contract is in days. So that equates to a certain number of days at 174 and then the in-service days as well to meet their requirements. If we have two hour late starts, two hour releases due to weather, et cetera, et cetera. We've got that 41 hours built in. If we have a year like we did a few years ago where we have 10 snow days, we want to take a couple off the end. We can do that if we've got the hours, but the teacher's only days. But that would work. It does give us a little flexibility having those hours above. The state minimum being that 1080.
Right. At some point, would it make sense to look at the teacher's contract to match it with ours? Or is that not possible? I just don't even know. I've just been saying like, it seems like we have a conflict there. Does it, is there any benefit to fixing it? No? Okay.
Well, I'm just trying to think it would.
Well, at one time their contract was 188 days.
It's been lessened.
Yeah.
We lessed the number of days when we went through our financial crunch. We, we lessen the days in the contract, but that also lessened the total pay that went home.
Right.
So if we were to, here's the deal. If we ever get that to hours, what if your hours changes? Teachers get paid a salary for a number of days within that.
It's like a once in a two decade time period where we're so far over. He never calls.
If it works, it works. I don't need, I don't need to, I'm just asking.
That's a fair question. But honestly, I think if we were to go to something with hours based contracts, et cetera, I would be hesitant to do that just because of the complications within what a contract would look like if it's hours based. For example, if someone has an IP after school, are we going to have them punch in, punch out? Are we gonna, you know, what does an hour look like? For example, the teachers get paid an extra stipend tonight. It's not their per diem hourly rate, but you know, the ones that go to the Christmas concert. And so we've got a separation right now of hours that they already work above and go out. I'll give you an example, even in the summer, they may work certain hours to do professional development or do different things. Summer schools are a different rate. Those, that hourly rate doesn't match up with their per diem rate necessarily here. So they're, they're just separated. No, that's a fair question, but if we were trying to sync those, I think it'd be, it'd be a lot of hidden landmines to try to work through.
And it sounds like it would be a pain for payroll to try to hourly.
Well, my thought was just simply not, still leaving on the salary, but just do like your contracted, whatever it is. You figure out how many days that is by eight hours in a day or whatever and, and.
But see, here's the other thing too. Teachers are here for an hour, basically longer than the kids are. So that doesn't even match when the teachers are here. The 1080 hours doesn't match what the teachers' hours are either.
I understand. You have a lot of that, yeah.
So I mean, there's just a lot of variables with that. And again, being salaried, you start doing an hourly basis thing, then are you salaried anymore? Because if you're salaried.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, it's kind of, it's the same. I mean, what we're, we're still asking them on an hour basis today. The way our, the way our salary is predicated is your hours are expected. You will be in the building from here to here. So it, it, it doesn't really matter. I, I don't, it's okay. We don't need to go down that rabbit hole. I just was asking.
Good question.
That's a good comment.
All right, so we presented the budget.
Calendar. Ask, ask, is there any public, is there any public comments? Anyone have anything else about the calendar? That's the purpose of the hearing.
Anybody? If not.
Okay.
Then.
Then.
I motion to approve the agenda is presented. Or sorry, the calendar is presented.
No, so adjourn the hearing.
We're just going to adjourn. This is just presentation. We'll approve it in the.
I'm late, I'm not, you're discombobulated.
I would have done the same.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. All right, we adjourn from that.
We're rocking.
Now we can move right on in to the actual board meeting. So it's the Wednesday, December 13th, regular board meeting. The mission of the community, Will community school district is to provide an education that encourages continual progress through the improvement of one's abilities, the expansion of one's interests and knowledge, and the growth of one's character. Called to order, roll call please, joy. Tim Barrett.
Here.
Linda Duncan.
Here.
Tom Fitzer.
Still here.
Rob Metzger. Carol Wayne.
Here.
All right, now agenda approval. Are there any additions, changes, or corrections with Stephen?
No.
All right. Second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the minutes approval. We will do both the November 8th land conveyance hearing and the November 8th regular board meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. All right. Number four. Oh, no. Number five, no, I thought it was number five. Number four, sorry, Justin. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong line.
Mine's easy, quick. That's it.
Look at the bids are for the Chromebooks.
Exactly. Uh, we have the, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, $37,000 to spend. Um, we're gonna go ahead and buy Chromebooks with those. So essentially we're going to buy as we can. We'll complete the rotation for sixth grade at two thirds of fifth grade. Basically, SHI came in with the cheapest. We're gonna go ahead and at grade school, we still get the touchscreen model. For the high school, we do not. We get the, uh, regular, uh, non-touch. So like I said, uh, SHI came in cheaper. We're a little bit over, but, uh, we're looking at $37,122.
Any questions for Justin? We won't approve this until we get to consent agenda where the bids are underneath that, that SHI.
No questions for Justin?
Thank you, Justin.
You.
That was quick and easy. And number five, we are recognizing tonight, Ms. Linda Duncan, who was elected to the school board in September of 2002 and has served religiously for 21 years. And just doing a little bit of math, if we've had 20 meetings a year, which is a board meeting and a work session, but you know, there's a couple of months we don't have them. She's served, she's been in over 400 meetings in the last 21 years.
I missed a few, a couple.
That's why I did 20 per year versus, you know, 22, giving you a little grace there. But even so, and some of those back when we had bargaining for all the mice in the spring.
That was horrible.
That was horrible. And there were a lot of nights.
I enjoyed the company most of the time. It was, it was okay, Joe, Joe was in a lot of them.
Watched a lot of American Idol.
Yes, yes.
They were a lot of nights.
Yes, yes.
But 21 years, over 400 meetings. If you average 60 diplomas a year, you've signed over 1,250 diplomas. Um, a lot of accomplishments in that 21 years, including a new elementary school. A ton of improvements throughout the district from interest-based problem solving, you know, the relationship with, with the staff and just what you've done for the kids. And, um, I've had one board president in my 19 years. So it's been quite a ride and you're certainly going to be missed. And it's been a lot of fun. We've been to a lot of school board conventions together. And, um, I feel like we all grew together as a district.
Yes.
As the time has gone on too. So we've appreciated your leadership and we wish you the best during your school board retirement.
Retirement, yes.
And I know that they have the flowers here for you and I've got a.
Thank you.
Card for you two as well. But is there anything the board members want to say? But what a legacy.
Thank you. Hey, thank you for all your support and everything. I mean, it's, it's been, I don't want to say it's been easy, but you make it more enjoyable. I mean, to come and to, I always enjoy things that we all have in common. I mean, we all are here for the students. We're all here for the staff. I mean, all, everybody in the building. So I mean, that is really.
Nice for you to come in and sit down and meetings.
Come to a hearing.
Yes.
You can ask questions, public hearing, you're the first person.
Hey, how, I can, like, how come the, the, yeah, calendar is this way?
You'll get what we're talking about.
Yes, I know. Well, I may have to creep on the, on the live feeds or the whatever.
You have the live streams?
Yes, I'll have to watch.
You'd be texting this life.
What? What is going on? This is new. All right, no, I have enjoyed it. Like I said, there's a couple of times when I didn't, but for the most part, I've always enjoyed all of it and all the people. That's what I miss. I miss all you guys and the staff. You, Tim, you just started having the teacher thing. That is wonderful. I really liked that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, no, thank you. Hi, hi, yeah.
The board and I got together and we, you know, found out what your favorite color was.
Yes, thank you.
There's a gift card up above to open with one of your restaurants that you like, so.
I'm sure it is. I always, you know me, I'm always here for the food. The work sessions, join them.
So no, we just want to say thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, yeah. I really like that. Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication, yeah.
My father was on the board, not as long as I, but that kind of instilled in me. And he was one too. We had to plan vacation so that he could be back for the school board. And I remember that. So, yes, it's, he instilled that in me and it's just, I've enjoyed it. People think I'm dorky, but I really, I should have been a teacher. I really should have been in the district and, and, but that didn't work out. So this is the next best. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right.
Awesome.
All right, so business financial functions.
Yep.
Angela, please.
Okay, upload five is the taxation fund, financial reports. All the funds are up except for general fund. It's down about 250,000. Reason being there is this month was bonus month for everyone. So payroll was a lot higher than usual. And then we had between purchase services, supplies and materials and capital outlay. We had an additional 99,000 there. So those are the reasons for the, the decrease in general fund. And then the other fund that we had the decrease in, um, just a small dip, nothing major, was our debt service, but we had three revenue. Well, our 2020 A and B that we split between community bank and Duett bank, we had our, our interest payments out of debt service. So, and you'll see that on the, on the board bills. Upload number six, ISP. We're to the point at this time of the year, we've spent almost 250,000 and we have, um, right around 212,000 left for the remainder of the year in that. Upload seven is self-insurance financials. That has only changed a few hundred dollars from last month, so we continue to be fine there. Latch key, upload number eight. We're doing just fine there. Anne actually came to me today. She got several emails, DHS, and I can't remember the other two, but she is going to apply for a grant. And again, this has to do with COVID. I just got to glimpse a little bit at, at the application that, that she sent in. And there are certain areas where they can spend the money, certain areas they can't. But it's anywhere from 10 to 50,000.
Oh, wow.
So she was gonna go ahead and apply for that. So we'll see what the outcome is there, but latch key is, is sitting just fine. As well as our nutrition fund, which is upload number 10. And then student activity fund is upload 12. And again, I sound like a broken record sometimes, but our winter canteen is just starting up with the winter sports starting, so we're in a deficit there, which will change. And then the spring canteen, um, we have transfer of inventory carryover there. So that's in the negative, which you all know that, that changes once those get up and, and running. Activity driving report is upload 14. And we've changed from our fall sports to our winter sports. So we've had, uh, an increase in, uh, our expenditures there. Board bills, upload 15. Under the central office VMO, you'll see several pages of purchases. And that's because the teachers have until February to spend their 350 that they each, that they've gotten from Townsend. So, um, a lot of teachers have put in their requisitions for that. So that's the reason for that. The other thing that we finally got is our junior high and our entry hall. When we had the air conditioning breakdown back in August, that just came through. So that is in the bills. On 22, we have our third quarter breakdown for our, um, SU insurance. And then like I mentioned before, Fund 40 debt service, we had our interest payments. And then in 33, we finally got everything for the elementary playground swing. So that will be paid in full as well. And that is all I have unless you have questions about something.
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
All right, next administrative reports, information. And I know, Mr. Meyer. Yes, I want to introduce myself first.
Linda, I want to thank you for your service. It's been fantastic. Need to know you on a personal level, but on a professional level, as we work together. What you do for the community, you know, when you owned your shop and now get to sail off into the sunset.
I've always enjoyed when you brought the new teachers in. That was fun to meet them and to give it a beaver shirt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So a couple, just a couple of things here on my report. The two pictures that I added there, we had our first and second grade concert last week and Mrs. Whitehead, um, had a sing-along at the end. Kendall was, you guys were there at the concert. It was really a cool experience. You know, quite honestly, she got up on the stage and turned around and directed the audience. And we had every chair imaginable in the gym and it was full and the bleachers were full. And it was really, it was really a pretty cool, uh, experience to see that. And, and I kind of told her afterward, I said, you, you probably just opened Pandora's box because that's going to be the explanation now. Every year that you have some kind of sing-along.
And that's, yeah.
You don't have to, yeah. So I thought it was, it was really cool, you know, kind of gets you in the mood of Christmas and then it's 40 degrees outside. So I don't know, you know, we'll see. Uh, and then my bottom note there, we're right in the middle of an I block cycle or at the end of it, before a new one starts here before the winter. So we've kind of instituted a boot camp. This week, the teachers had a chance to kind of put in some new or some different activities or a way to work on student fluency. We'll do fast testing when we get back shortly after winter break. So it's kind of some prep work for that. And then we'll pick that up again once we get back from Christmas break. So any other questions or anything I have listed there? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. All right, Mrs. O'Donnell, you are next.
I'm going to start by saying, I know Ms. O'Donnell is going to share with you, um, a fact sheet. I tasked her, Mr. Diedrichs, from Durant last spring with looking at our schedule 7/12. I know we had a conversation about this.
Yeah.
For as a block and as far as an eight period day or whatnot. And I tasked them to get together, weigh the pros and the cons, and then make a recommendation moving forward for next year. And they made a recommendation to be schedules, whether it's the elementary recess schedule, whether it's when you're having specials, the elementary, any schedules or whatnot, they're approved administratively. You won't see schedules going from the board, like a bus schedule, a class schedule or whatnot. And they sat down with me and they've looked at those, um, pros and cons. And Linda mentioned this earlier and this stuck with me, what she said. And this is something we've preached since I've started as superintendent of five, is we approach everything from the student level. We try to make decisions on what's best for the kids. And with this proposal of going to the eight period day, that evidence was overwhelmingly positive for the kids. If you ask Siri, what's the average attention span of a 14-year-old on your phone or Google?
Yeah.
It'll tell you it's anywhere between 28 and 42 minutes of an average attention span of a 14-year-old. Now that goes down with 12-year-olds and our seventh graders are 12 when they come in. And even at the high school level, it's, you don't get to 60 minutes. Our block's been 80 minutes. Things have changed societally from when this was instituted over, oh, it's almost been 30 years since we've had the block. And. Right, wrong, and different, we're one of the last schools to be with the block in eastern Iowa.
It's all come back, full circle.
The principals get tired of me hearing me say this, but there's a life cycle to everything.
Yes.
Change is mandatory, growth is optional, okay? It will always be change. And in today's world with instant everything, just like, now me Googling that, when I was in the car there today going home, just asking a question, I have that answer instantaneous.
Yeah.
30 years ago, I'd have had to go to a library, find different sources through a card catalog about research on adolescent attention span, have to find it somewhere and then extrapolate all that to get an info, get a question answered. Today, and some of the block, when it was originally instituted, was allowed time for that. That's not necessary in 2023. You can find information by asking your phone, hey, Google, what's this and what's that? Now, that doesn't mean there still isn't time that's necessary to take that information to make a, you know, a type of argument or a point or compare and contrast, et cetera, et cetera. But that was some of the original intent of taking an 80-minute block that's uninterrupted and diving deep into those types of things. And that was before cell phones, that was before the internet, that was before a lot of different things. And what we've seen over the past number of years is just a decline. And, and the goal was when they originally instituted the block schedule was taking two lessons on Monday and Tuesday and putting that into one day, right? You were taking two lessons into one. And what's happened with that is it's now it's become a little bit of a one lesson and it's just been stretched out. And we found there's a lot of dead time for the students and the teachers. Because again, you can access and get answers to things much faster today than you did 30 years ago. And so Ms. O'Donnell presented to the staff today and Mr. Hewitt. We've got a couple of different schedules in place that they're still looking at. The other thing is, and this is on me, we like to get in from inland, who knows this from, unfortunately having to deal with me for 19 years. We want decisions made early enough, at least in the school year for the following year. I've always said, when you get back from Christmas break, we're planning the next school year. And we start planning the next school year administratively in September. We ended up to the staff when we get back from Christmas. Some districts will like present this information at the first in-service in August. Say, hey, guess what? We just went to an eighth period day. Chaos. Got a whole semester to answer any questions, work with people, get them resources. If they need to go visit schools, if they need to do different things, time to look at scheduling, et cetera, et cetera, to make this successful.
And we've tapped the AEA to come help us do some professional development to get people prepared and ready to go.
So we're taking every step possible to make this as seamless isn't the right word, but give them, teachers the tools to be successful with this change. And with any change, there's always going to be people, the fear of change is deep. The fear of this is the way we've always done it is deep. And so you're going to hear that. But the concerns that we've heard and have explored have all been adult concerns. It's not concerns about the students well-being. It's about how's this going to affect me as a teacher and my time and my planning and whatnot.
So there has been a little pushback?
Oh, absolutely. Shoot, we get pushed back and we change the one schedule.
Well, I understand that. I'm just curious what.
Yeah, and there always will be. I mean, that's just a fact of life. You work with the.
Was it like overwhelmingly pushback?
Actually, a lot of the conversations we had today were pretty positive.
Yeah, so we're, we've, we rolled it out to the staff.
So I wanted to preclude that conversation with the background, the directive came from me with them. So go ahead, Russell and Joel.
So, yeah, uh, Joel, uh, we've been actually meeting with Joel, um, since last spring, just starting the conversations, what would this look like? And then, um, continued then meeting pretty much weekly this fall as best we could. And then now a lot. So we're, we're kind of down to two different prototypes for what we're looking at and what needs we would like a new schedule to make. And, you know, the biggest question is why? You know, the staff, that's what they want to know. And, and a lot of it is, uh, to do with brain research and how kids learn nowadays. Especially, um, the brain has been changed by, um, electronic devices and the attention spans have gotten smaller. But also, uh, they, University of Wisconsin did a very in-depth study on, um, this hours in a school day and class, uh, hours, the minutes of a class. And they've come out with a lot of information about how, um, you know, when we, when we learn, we make new brain synopsis and they, you know, they work together. And the, um, the more you can grow and the more you can get those to communicate, that's how we learn. Well, what's the secret to that? Well, it's intensity of instruction and repetition. And so when we meet every other day, um, it is hard to get that, that repetition in, 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 um, well, most areas actually. And so, you know, it's kind of lighting with, um, recall. So it's the information that's being presented isn't, isn't always being moved to the long-term storage of the brain. And so, I mean, there's a, there's a lot out there with that. Just the physical movement of a day, kids can't get so bored if it's a 45 to 48 minute period up in, you know, I, I don't know if you've heard this from your kids, but they seem to say, oh, it's, we're not doing anything anyway. We, we hear that a lot in, um, in the front office when the kids want to go home or go do this or whatever. We just, you know, want to see how, uh, if the kids are, if the learning is more urgent and the instruction is more intensified and there's more repetitions, you would logically assume, which I hate assuming, but that you would see learning stick longer and that behaviors would be also down because there's not a lot of downtime. There's going to be movement. You've got, you've got to get, you know, you've got to get to the instruction and you've got to get through the lesson. You would, I believe we will have to have study calls to, you know, every other day PE. You would have to, or, you know, it's going to be a change in our students who are in lots of, uh, extracurricular activities. We'll probably need more of that time. But also the AEA is going to come in and help us adjust our lessons to fit a 45-minute, um, period. And then also help us understand what's reasonable for homework expectations when we're doing a 45-minute block and when we're meeting every day. Should there be as much homework because we're seeing them daily?
I just, this is my problem with it. And not necessarily my problem with it. This is where I see it being an issue, I mean, for my child specifically. So our conference is spread out.
I know.
So they leave at 1:35 on a school bus to drive almost two hours to a ballgame and not get home till 11:40 at night. And they're expected to do the homework for the class that they missed. They weren't even there to ask questions and the next day. So how does that all play out? And I know there's a lot to iron out and I'm not asking for like results, like what's this going to be? I mean, how does that affect those kids? You know what I mean?
Have to be discussed.
Yeah.
Because it is going to be a difference.
And there's a lot of kids, they, because they've been hearing the teachers, you know, for, right, two months now. It's been talking, Briggs has been coming home and saying, we're going to this, we're doing this. We, they're panicking, they don't understand. And like you said, a lot of it is change, even for me, that's a lot of change. But, I mean, I would like to hear, I mean, as a parent, I want to hear more pros and cons. You know, I want to see. But, I mean, I would like to hear, I mean, as a parent, I want to hear more pros and cons, you know, I want to see the pros and wheres.
Well, we're starting, yeah, we're starting with some.
I'm just, and I
You know what's interesting too about missing that block?
Yeah.
If you miss on a Tuesday, for example.
It's four days before you get back.
Exactly. You've only had that class one day that week.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Because you might, let's, if you have three, three on one week, two days on the other. So you've missed an entire.
Right.
Instead of missing, so in other words, those other four days of the school week, instead of meeting one time, you'll meet four days.
Right. But what is nice is they have that longer period of time where they can go ahead and make up a test or a quiz or ask questions because they can do it after school, you know? And a lot of times they'll have practice before school, they'll have practice after school. It ends up being so stretched out of the day. I feel like that is so much stress on kids that already have all these expectations and all this on them anyway.
No, we have to.
You know, and I mean, I think the school day is probably long enough anyways, you know, the way we're at. And then we add several hours of homework, you know, we're doing this before school, we're doing this after school, it's a lot. And then, you know, these kids are wanting to be involved and we're a small, we're a small district. We, we've got to have, we've got to have these same kids doing, you know.
West Liberty, Kipden, Muskegon. Virtually every school in our conference has an eighth period day.
I'm just, like I said, I'm thinking out loud, it's just questions that are, I think a lot of people are going to have.
We're in the minor, major majority, minority. So, I mean.
To, to that end, I'm really good. How do we look into getting out of having to, let's divide that and let's go to two conferences and we can just stay south and not worry about going north. That would be where I would want to start. By setting off of that though, I'm totally neutral. I honestly don't have a, a opinion either way. And having gone to school, I did two years of each, so I mean, I've totally done both. What I can say that I remember the, the speech we got when we converted was some of it was like, at that time, we only shared, shared one service and that was FFA. My concern now is we share multiple services and how does, you know, with, with that bus schedule and so on.
And Ms. O'Donnell can talk about that because that, that was a lot of the conversation.
That's a big struggle.
Huge.
And, and I can say that like, I know when we went to block, it did help Durant because if you wanted to take FFA, you had to block out three classes. In order to do it, because you had to be able to lose the ten minutes to get here and the ten minutes to go back. So you'd have a study hall on either side of that ag class.
That sounds like less opportunity that way. So, oh, I'm interested. Go ahead.
Well.
Those are, those are great questions. There was, I'm not fooling it. Those are great questions.
Researching, um, so for it to make sense in transportation wise, uh, you would want, like if you were going over to Durant to take a class, you would want to do two, two electives over there. So if you're going over there, say, um, to take an FCS class, you'd probably want to take foods and then maybe you want to take the child development class or something like that, or another elective. So what we, we decided to do is open up electives from blocks one through five because, um, six is lunch in that period. And that would give us a little bit more opportunity for transportation. And we're also looking to have, um, hoping to build in like an intervention time that we have like in junior high where students are struggling. A teacher could request them and they would go work in a small group with that teacher. And we'd obviously have to have planned activities for kids who don't need that. But, um, that, it's called MTSS, elementary's been doing it for years, secondary is not. And we, we need it and we need that time, um, for kids to work one-on-one with teachers. And, um, also just built that time in, wanted to do, um, a speaker, we wanted to do something. We have a little bit of that flexed time built into the schedule. It will be interesting. It's a change.
It also cuts the number of shuttle buses down to two rather than four. We wouldn't be paying somebody to sit on a bus for that much work.
So does that, does that go ahead and remove the skinny from the schedule too?
It takes the skinny out of the schedule.
That had a life cycle too.
It had a life cycle.
Yes.
I agree with that.
I came in, but.
I said the exact same thing to someone today. It was great. And now I feel like the content just isn't what we wanted it to do before. Which it, yeah, it was really great at first.
Times have changed in thirty years, you know, like, so.
Skinny's been in place for at least ten.
Yeah.
So I mean, we just.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a, it's a huge learning curve. You know, I've been, uh, a principal in both, uh, period schedule and block schedule. I see benefits to both.
Me too. It's not like.
There, yeah, it's not like either one, it's just where, you know, I would say that, um, I, I, in thirty years of education, a student's attention span has been what I've seen the greatest change in. So trying to meet the students where they are in, um, development, brain development, maturity. And make sure we're giving like the best instruction we can give them. And if right now they're saying, hey, electronic devices are affecting our kids' short-term memory and the ability to store information. And the answer is repetition and intensifying, um, the instruction and also, you know, making it urgent. Then we probably better look into that because our kids have changed. And, um, now do we want flexibility to do, you know, a longer science lab or things like that? We'd like that if there's a way to figure out how to do that. But, um, yeah, it's just, right now it's a lot of brainstorming, thinking, playing scenarios.
Like, because that, science was one of the main, again, when I got the speech of why we're, you know, going to this as a sophomore, junior, science was one of the main driving forces. But is there a way in a period format that science becomes two periods? Like if you sign up for biology, it's not on the back of two periods.
We could.
Yeah, there's all kinds of, we got a lot of flex, a lot of.
So when I worked at Bednarf, we did a seven period day. And there was a couple of classes because of the rigor of the classes, they needed more time, so they've scheduled two periods together. And basically still make that a block class if you will.
See, what you could do in that situation is if they met every day for two periods, that becomes a semester class and, and of one semester class versus a year.
Yeah, like advanced chemistry, maybe that's a double block for a semester.
Give me periods, I don't know, three and four, which is twice the time instead of being a year-long course. It's a semester.
Would then enable every student to be able to take more high level.
Potentially.
Because you have.
This depends on how we, you know, schedule it out.
Yeah.
What we're, what we're seeing right now though is a lot of our behavior issues that Todd and I deal with are coming toward the end of the block.
Yeah.
Because they're not doing anything, they're bored, now they're picking on each other and, and, and I get it. It's hard to keep them engaged for eighty minutes. And think about when there's a sub.
Yeah.
Oh.
There's a sub for twenty minutes. And you know, we have study halls now in the block. There was never supposed to be a study hall during block.
I mean. Math originally started, teach a lesson, work ten problems, turn it in, work a second lesson, and then that was your homework if you needed homework. That, that was how we did it.
Well, that's such the study hall time was supposed to be built into the block. That's what I'm saying. There was never mentioned a study halls in a block system.
We did it in the block. We did the work on your math.
No, but we still had a study hall designated for kids for eighty minutes.
That's true.
Which is just doom and gloom when you look at the schedule and you're, oh, I've got a study hall. Well, and the kids will tell you too.
Kids had two, like two eighty block study halls and.
Oh, no, no, no.
That was.
And they're already taking a break in the middle of each block now. So if you're splitting a block in half and take a ten-minute break, what's the difference between just switching classes? You're already taking, you're already doing, you know, an eight chunked up, period chunked up day.
I don't argue with your, your disruption with, with behavior. I, I can just speak to, I think your behavior problem with the shift, it's in the hall.
No, I know.
Now, now it's when we change classes that we, we have the next problem.
Right.
But you're, you're never going to outrun it. It's nature of the beast.
Right.
But I will say this, when I'm in the hallway in the middle of those blocks, each teacher has a different time to take a break. And you know what? Those teachers aren't in the hallway. They stay back in the classroom and we have kids in the hallway with no supervision.
Yep.
When we switch with the bell in first and second period and they're all out there. We got more supervision. Right now it's just.
Chaos.
Yeah.
I get it.
No, I'm just, but you're right. I mean, it's not like it's magically we're not going to have issues. But I'm just saying we should have less of the minor issues that get kids kicked out because you were screwing around with Billy in the back and broke my beaker and.
Did you do that on purpose?
Sorry, that was very illiterate. But that being said, again, we've got a whole semester to work with other schools, the AEA and our teachers to do the best we can to get it implemented in. And you know what? I'm guessing at some point in the history of the world of school, there'll be a different schedule at some point again too. This isn't, I was joking with Sue today, the schedules for schools aren't written on tablets like the Ten Commandments where it's forever, right? They're, they're always going to be evolving based upon kids' needs, technology. MCC is really happy we're making this change. They've said for years.
Yeah, they've wanted us to make this because it just, it makes the, um, for them, it just, it makes it easier. And also it makes it easier for MCC to send us an instructor to have a class here. And so that's.
Don't those academies meet every day now?
Academies are every day, so.
So they're every day and we've been every other day, so it's off.
So in the process of all this, has, has anyone talked to the students at all?
Not yet.
I think it's.
We just started with staff.
Right, okay. I'm just curious. But it'd be interesting to hear what they have to say and not necessarily like, come tell us, you know, how much you hate this, but okay, hey, you know, we are going to do this, so let's, let's get some ideas and what, what would you like to see? What can we, because like you're saying, we can make this whatever you want it to be. You know, it doesn't have to be, well, I have math and I have, you know, ELA, I have this, I have this, I have this. It can be, hey, a double or a block per se in the period, eight period day. So it'd be nice to, you know what I mean? What kind of classes, you know, would you like to see that you can do this or that or, you know, whatnot? So most definitely.
Well, we did, we did hear the opinion of one student today. Joe Hewitt was in my office and my daughter told me. They had her on speakerphone. She didn't know Joe was in there. Dad, are we going to an eight period day? It's like a two day after three.
I just had to giggle because we met with the staff and it wasn't fifteen minutes and I had kids at my door. What, what's going on? Why are we going eight years? Like, wow.
Well, the kids think it's going to be more work. The walkout, if you're taking two days work into one now, it's just getting split in half.
Yeah.
You know, and Hadley's been one of those kids that have said, well, I have a study hall today and the teacher's gone the other block. So why do I come in until noon? Because half my day, I don't need to be there, right? And there's a, if you talk to Jill, I'm the number of parents that call in because their kids text their dad or mom, hey, there's a sub today and so on, so's class. And I got my project in there, I want to go home. Or they'll watch Netflix. If you ask the kids, if you, if you were to survey the kids, how many do you watch Netflix in school? You don't want to know.
Actually, that's not true. Netflix is blocked at the firewall level. They're using their personal phones.
Yeah.
It's blocking firewall level, so.
Okay, my daughter watches it on her phone.
They're all watching.
I never said it was on their Chrome.
To Tara's point, uh, like I said, I'm indifferent because I've had both, so it doesn't really matter when, I don't have to deal with it.
I'm on both too, so.
On the day-to-day, but just to let you guys know as we look forward, especially on the, your bus schedule. E-rate certified, um, bus wifi. Richie's buses, as of last year, I think all of the major buses, I'm not sure about the, the short, this, I don't think the shorter buses.
I think there's two buses, I'm pressing.
Two buses, I thought there was one. I thought the shorter buses. Well, anyway, most of them we could put, they already have the wifi equipment there. We just have to purchase the service. So for those of you who aren't.
Somewhere.
Yeah, for those of you who aren't familiar with E-rate, E-rate is, uh, through the FCC and we get money back when we apply for services that are certified. So, um, we would go ahead and we could bid that out this year still, because I haven't sent anything out yet for bid. And our discount rate is anywhere from sixty to seventy percent depending on, the discount rate is based on free and reduced lunch. So the more kids we have in free and reduced, the higher our discount rate is. So if five buses cost us five hundred dollars a month, we get sixty to seventy percent of that back. So we would have to budget for that, but if that's something that we want to look at, that's available now too.
So that they can.
Yeah, potentially, if you had an hour and a half bus ride, you could.
Hour and a half bus ride.
She's saying if they're on the bus coming home from, from Dyersville. Again, I think, I think the issue with Dyersville needs to be addressed.
Going to take the right kid to want to do his homework, but.
First day's hot foot. But, 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 but that's a good point. And you know what's interesting is that Sid here, going back reminiscing with Linda and Tim, you were at a meeting at the elementary. I don't know, twenty years ago, and we, we talked about multi-age.
Oh, yes.
And that was a major change and people were up in arms. And, and here's what it really came down to, and I said this at night, and I believe it today, no matter what schedule we run, the quality of the teacher in the classroom makes or breaks the class. I don't care what schedule you have, I don't care if it's multi-age, I don't care if you run a half-period day. The quality of the teacher is the variable in the quality of the learning. And the schedule is just, it just is what it is. And so that's what we have to focus on. And you know what? Multi-age worked because of the quality of teacher. Multi-age wasn't the silver bullet, but it sure helped and we had small class size and we wanted to combine the, you know, help with our easing decline in enrollment. And what the schedule is doing here is helping just with kids' attention spans and just trying to work with kids to get them lining up, you know, everything from MCC classes to having a reason to be here.
So I know it works well with MCC, another, again, I'm only going back trying to crack my brain on what all the same speech to get us to accept it the other way was, but, uh, it was college prep was one of the other big touts that when you go to college, it's usually Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday.
With their fifty minutes on Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Yeah, they're longer on Tuesday.
Yeah, and I want to have, yeah, no, absolutely. They're double.
Yeah. But I just, the point was is that it was supposed to help prepare you to manage your time and, and work efficiencies and so on, to, to deal with the split. Didn't really work. I don't know, I, I mean, I got through college, I don't know that I excelled. Probably should have read a few more books.
So I wanted to share that with you tonight because Ms. O'Donnell and Mr. Hewitt had that meeting today. And like I said, anytime there's change, there's going to be.
Expect pushback.
But I do think Terry brings up a good point. You could maybe have classmates talk to kids.
Definitely.
Just to give back, feedback and.
Once we have that schedule, I want to present it to not only the, our staff, obviously for them to go through, because that's why we're holding the one-on-one meetings. We want to, what are your concerns? You know, what are your needs that you feel like you're going to need for support? And what, if any, might be beneficial change in the schedule? And, and Joe and I, we underestimated how long these days we're going to take. We only got through six today. We're like, oh boy, which is great, but six, um, every, the, which was odd, I wasn't expecting this, but the first six we've, we've spoken to, their benefits list outweighed their, their concerns. Their, their concerns are valid and real and absolutely the, probably the same ones I have. But they do see that this could, could really be beneficial for the kids. But, uh, and I'm hoping also that with the ability now to maybe partner a little bit more with the MCC and the ability to maybe pick up some, um, different electives, because skinny won't look, it will be either more electives or more options to take a core class. It should help our kids expand and be able to take some different things. So, and I, I would, I want that for our kids too. Just the opportunity to take different classes that when you only have one option when you're in band and this is the only other class we offer, but now we can offer a few others, so.
And even though it's not really ownership, but getting the students involved.
Absolutely.
Is going to help so much for them.
Yes.
Feeling calmer, feeling.
They've never had anything.
Right, but it's like, it's, and they need that input or asking them.
Is there any merit to, I mean, I'm just picking student council because it's already a predetermined set of select students. But some sort of student-led team to have like a seat at the table, to, to be able to give their, their side. And, I mean, at least let them voice their opinion.
Ownership.
I get how that goes. Sometimes the answer is, yeah, great idea, we can implement. And other times it's like, yeah, no, we're not putting Starbucks in the, in the cafeteria, like.
But sometimes they.
There might be some good ideas.
Exactly.
They're living it every day.
They're living it. Yes, they know what they need. That's how I feel at least, but I think definitely.
If you give them buy-in, usually they'll help support it, but you can get some sort of morale.
Yeah.
And, and again, I guess I'm just asking from a board perspective, I mean, is this official then? Like there's, are we still in the evaluation or is it, it's done, we're gone and it's over the other way?
All right.
It's official. But the details of it, it's kind of like saying we're buying a car, we made a decision.
We're having to figure out which one we're getting.
We're figuring out what tires to get on the car. Right?
All the food stuff in the inside. All the food stuff in the inside.
Sorry to bring up bad stuff, but I'm just saying, I'm giving examples.
It's not too much on the truck, though.
I can't help but think.
So, there'll be more, more coming at you in January.
Well, I certainly would be willing to be a part of helping however possible, um. I, I, I guess I, again, I'll, I'll state, I'm completely neutral, but if we're gonna do it, I wanna see it succeed. I don't, I don't wanna see it crash and burn.
We're gonna do this, let's, let's, let's do it.
As the details come into place, Mrs. Donald will update the board as, as before. Again, we've got the whole semester to tweak it and work it, and, and, uh, yeah, working with our partners next door as well, because it affects both of us.
Yeah.
Yes. It's kind of nice, you have somebody to, well, more brains are better than one or two, as Joe and I say, like.
As long as it's not too many cooks in the kitchen.
The problem is, when you have that kind of logistics, it also complicates it, so.
A lot of moving pieces.
There's a lot of things, an awful lot of moving pieces. But, uh, I will say, my first principalship, we shared with two schools. We had two buses going, two different directions, and also, for one particular class, we had to bus them all the way to McCokeville. That was our third school that we shared with, and it was like, oh, wow. That master schedule, ooh, baby, uh, was something, but yeah, um, lots of moving pieces. So, I think we can, we'll figure this out. It's going to take a lot of work, it's going to take a lot of moral support for our staff and kids, because change is hard on everybody. I mean, it is. But in the end, uh, in the end, I think our kids will be happier, and I think our staff will be happier, because it's just, your days are gonna go fast. They're gonna go fast.
I made the analogy, too. Coaching is the one thing in schools where there's a scoreboard, right, and so you see results on reference, right? Coaching and teaching are very similar, you're trying to get the maximum learning capacity out of all your kids in the classroom, just like as any coach runs basketball, wrestling, baseball. So I don't care what the sport is, you wanna maximize your time to get the best result at the scoreboard. And of course, ours is standardized tests, blah, blah, blah. But what I'm saying is, great teachers are also, they're coaching, right? They're trying to get kids to be excited about learning and, and retain and whatnot. I have yet to see in my thirty years in education, as a former coach, AD, a coach running a block schedule with practices. Where they make three days one week, two days the other, double up the practice time, and don't meet with the kids every day. Because what a coach will tell you is, what if that kid's sick, and now they didn't have practice, and he's my quarterback? And now he has a practice one day this week, and we've got a game on Friday? That's illogical, right? You want him every day. And a coach, my wrestling coach, might say, well, why would I double up on wrestling time after half the practice over there? It's lost, and I've lost him physically and mentally, and they're thinking about something else. So I'd rather go every day with a shorter amount of time, so I've got him focused, locked in, muscle memory, every day. And if that kid's sick, or has college visitors, grandma died, and he went to a funeral, they're not, they're still getting four days of practice versus one. Depending on when that would fall. And so if there was truly, that block is like the miracle or the best system, you would see athletic teams adopting that throughout the country. I don't know of anyone that does that for those particular reasons, and I think there's a lot of application there in the classroom. Just my observation. Sorry, but I think that, that hits home with people, and I've had that conversation with people that are involved in athletics, they're like, we would never do that. So, you guys gotta get your first class.
Thank you, supervise, thank you, everyone. Linda, you? Thank you. Thank you for everything. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm so impressed and in awe of your dedication to this school district, that.
Have we had a board member, Joy, I'll have to look that up, I've seen it for more than twenty-one years.
I'm, I'm just, I don't really know.
I mean, you may hold the record.
Yeah.
We'll look it up. I'm serious.
I'm not sure if it's good or bad.
I don't know, it's just, I'm a dork, I, I enjoyed this, I enjoyed this, I did.
Because of your leadership and being a stable board.
My leadership, yes, but it's also, we are a team, we are a board, it's not just one person. And I always tried to, hard.
Yeah, you bring together this board for many years. That's awesome, that just doesn't happen.
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
It doesn't, no. And it sure makes a difference.
It's a reflection of the board secretary.
It's joy, it's all joy to see the concert.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a quick question, I was looking ahead here on the activities, so I've been working concession stands here. We talked about last year, is there not a card machine?
Yeah, it's in there. We used, or Aaron used it last night.
It's not always, though.
Okay.
The second one, right?
Where's Bo?
And up and running.
What, the point of sale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was there last night, it's all I know.
It hasn't been, though.
Okay.
We've had people come and like not have cash, I gave two students money out of my pocket, so they get some-
We're talking to Townsend, I guess, I think, Terry.
Yes. I thought you would have two.
I thought we bought two.
We have two, right?
Oh, yeah, yes.
We have two.
Okay, so maybe it's just not up and running, and nobody knows what to do with it?
Yes, one stays there, that was part of the-
That's why we got two.
We got two, one that was supposed to be an Al card, and one was supposed to stay there.
She had to log out, log back in, and it was a lot of complications.
I, it was there, it's just not up and running.
Oh, I thought you were saying it was up, but it was running last night for you, Tommy.
It did.
Well, it took her a while to like get it, so I think it was off. I think she like powered it up and then had to fight through, but she didn't have to log in, so, but she figured it out somehow, but I know, it, I mean, it took a while. She was pretty proud of herself when she got it, and I don't mean, which I was like, oh, then you're doing it, not me, I'm-
Whatever we need to do, or if we need to train-
Justin, will you ask Bo about that?
He's not in there, I don't know.
When he, when you do see him?
If it's something where Terry's not there, and we need to train people how to do it, so be it, because people are used to us having it, and no one has cash anymore, and you can't, you can't really use your cash, so when they come in, they're like, give me their card.
Challenge, though, if Terry's not there, who do you train? Because like, sometimes you're staffing-
Right.
The concession stand with parents-
Parents.
That aren't always gonna be there, I gotta work my two times in the mouth.
Unless you could do something per-
There should be a sheet that says to turn this on, press button.
It's, it's pretty simplistic, I mean.
You can have it step-by-step, or if-
It's the same system that Chili runs, it's the same system that is in about eighty percent of restaurants across the country.
Is a cafe.
So it's pretty intuitive.
My experience with the boys-
I know, it likes the program, isn't it called?
It's called toast.
It's toast.
It's toast, that's okay.
Yes, it comes from-
I mean, it's gonna be, it's like a restaurant.
But that, but that's, that's what we, that's, that's who they're using.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, it needs to be up and running.
Right, right, well, I, I don't know if we need to, my experience with boysports is we always have someone in charge of the concession stand. Like, we've got Melanie Drake for basketball, so if it's, you know.
Melanie should know how to-
Melanie turns it on, you know what I mean, or whatever, or if I turn it on, I don't care, like, just so that we have it consistently, and we're not like, oh, yes, sorry.
Well, I'll go a step further, Ryan Hensler's gonna come in, in January, just give an athletic update, and we'll-
That's why I was kinda reading forward on that.
They're going to bound potentially as a conference, and that'll be cashless, kinda like what the state does and everything, so.
It's the exact same as what the state is.
But what I'm, that's my point, we gotta have this up and running and going there, unless we're not-
Cash coming in, because I don't need it, and I've already bought my tickets.
Exactly, so we gotta have toast going.
I toasted that.
Tara, or Tara?
Tara. Good.
Great point, I will follow with Bo and Terry, we'll see where we're at. Anyway, Ryan's coming in, okay, and we're gonna talk about that.
All right, all right, moving on, consent agenda number one has instructional coach.
Yep.
Description, and that's it.
Else. Make a motion.
One second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, all right, consent agenda number three are all the-
Quite a few here, uh.
Readings.
The A, B, and C, no, A and B are first readings, and you can see the tweaks that are recommended from the association. Doesn't match up with what Association of School Boards recommends, there's no tweaks there. Motion paper.
One second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, all right, consent agenda number three are all the-
Quite a few here, uh.
Readings.
The A, B, and C, no, A and B are first readings, and you can see the tweaks that are recommended from the association. I'm gonna get mine pulled up. I am, it's not, no, it's, there you go. Are there any questions? I've looked at these, but I'm at, I'm giving you time if there's questions about A and B.
So obviously, we've added-
Yes.
What's in black, bold.
And is there, I guess, is there any callouts that you would point out that is?
Yeah, no, you can see, uh, that seven oh four point, yeah, seven oh one point four, the bold.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, but that's what the, that's what the state has in their boilerplate.
That's what it is, that's what it needs to be.
It's, yeah. I think it's common sense, so you can tell I didn't write that. It's much higher level than mine, so I mean, it's not like we-
There's a lot more words to say, what I could say in a few.
That's what I'm saying, I have a simplified, it's maybe first sounds, so you can see that someone that worked all day, that got paid to do that. So, FYI, that's seven oh four, one point four, not seven oh one point six is, um, all new.
All, as I say, for a new one.
Yep, that they recommended. Letter C, D, and E are second readings from last month that we talked about. And F, Angela can talk about this, maybe more in depth, but it's from the SBRC, um, for model, modified supplemental amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. This is the on-time funding that you get for open enrollment, okay? And for that ELL, which is English Language Learner, um, we get a sixteen hundred dollars. If, if someone is designated as someone, you know, English is their second language, English Language Learner, they get an extra weighting of point two-two. Okay, and that's a big deal for schools like Westbury, Columbus, Johnson, Ever High.
Yeah.
You know, ELL rate, we don't have a lot of those students, but yeah, we still qualify if we have a couple. So that's that sixteen oh three, that one sixteen is because of open enrollment, and that is not cash that comes from the state. That is spending authority, which we use our cash reserve levy to fund the authority. So that one sixteen and that sixteen oh three, state's not cutting us a check, they're saying you have the authority, and the way you backfill that authority is through your cash reserve levy. Uh, when you're able to do that, that's why if you have, your authority is X, but your cash is Y, there's a gap. There's a gap because of things like this, and then when you have the opportunity in your budget to do a cash reserve levy, let's say your cash reserve levy is Z, and that's half of the gap, that's when it backfills that gap from your authority to where your cash is. Does that make sense? A little bit.
It runs out, what?
The state gives us authority, they don't, the state gives us authority, they don't always give us cash.
No.
And they expect you to backfill that through your local tax base, through your cash reserve levy, when you have the ability to do it. I'll give you another example, it's just real quick, if the state ever comes back, and they may in the future, because I don't, we'll have a financial situation again where they do an across-the-board cut. You've seen that in the past, they don't cut your authority, they just cut the cash that comes to you. And then you know what they make school boards do?
Figure out how to backfill.
And you know how you do that?
Tax.
Raise your local taxes, so they say, well, we didn't raise taxes, we just cut your-
They make us do it.
Yeah, thanks a lot, guys.
Yep.
Shift it down to us.
Yep.
Show them. So, that's letter F, Angela, do you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, you can just figure out the calculations there. Our, um, our certified enrollment just dropped a point four, so that's why we don't, we don't get anything for the increased enrollment. Okay, so that's, that's pretty much the same. Our open enrollment out, um, that went from thirty-two last year to forty-seven this year, so fifteen is the increase. So you're taking the fifteen times, um, uh, your cost per pupil, uh, plus your TLC, so that's how they come up with the one sixteen, five sixty-two. And then we only have one student, um, and I don't know when the last time we had a student hit fifth year.
This, this, that represents a new ELL student.
Okay.
Our prior students are in our certified enrollment or budget, or however that works, that would be just a new one for this year. That's about a fifth of that seventy-six hundred, you know, if we get about seventy-six hundred per student in regular program cost, a fifth of that, so that's sixteen twenty-three. So it's like point two-two of what you get to multiply for every one of your ELL students.
It is like math coming handy.
So that would be the intermediate there, times your, your cost per pupil, and that's where they come up with the sixteen oh three.
Moving on, letter G is our, um, retirement incentive that we've talked about the last couple work sessions. I need approval tonight, Joy will have those out before Christmas, and then, uh, qualified members will have until February first to turn that in, to accept that. Letter H is the adoption of our calendar as presented during the hearing. And letter I, based upon what Justin presented, uh, the recommendation is with a SHI of thirty-seven thousand, one twenty-two point zero two. And that's it for consent agenda.
That's it, huh?
That's it.
That's all.
Hey, you remember a couple once ago when we had like two pages?
Yes.
It was all board policy, but still.
All right, uh, motion to approve of consent agenda number three.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, all right, we're gonna look at the canvas, which is wrong.
The ballot, it's correct to one.
But.
They're four-year terms.
Not six.
I just had a heart attack.
I said earlier today.
The board doesn't approve the canvas, it's just a presentation.
I know, I read that, it went.
I joke with Tommy, he's now on the aisle of Senate. You've got a Senate seat.
Yeah, I'm glad I got off. Glad I didn't run, it's like, I don't need it.
Time insurance, all the perks that come with it.
There you go, there you go. But you can see the informational discussion items, Julie Keith, Shane, Matt Washington. So, maintenance-wise, ever since Reagan's retired, we haven't had snow days. I joke with Andy all the time, I'm like, you have no idea how lucky you are. It's hard to beat up here in Florida, and they're in the rearview aisle.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, it's gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get.
I would like to have a maintenance committee, though, end of January, early February, once we get that, you know, get those committees filled tonight, but to plan for next summer already, which is good, so I'd like to do that. Pool board no longer exists. Unless we wanna put Rob on there, he's not our progress. But otherwise, that's all I have, ladies.
That's good, put that on there, instead of, that's, this is the next one.
Yeah, no.
So your fifth one is the, let's go, honey, conference board, good.
Robert twenty-four.
He told me. Oh, jeez, I don't believe you, Tara, I'm sorry, I don't believe you.
I do. Otherwise, Linda, you have the, the ability to call for adjournment.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I will make a, a motion that we adjourn.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
End of an era.
You know, some, some school boards do, they have a gavel, and name tag, name tag.
Well, they have rowdy board members, you don't have one. Tara's been our field, Tara. Hey, taste some, taste some dessert home with you.
I'm gonna stay.
Sam, come on up.
I wanna know who's gonna be president.
Well, have, I know, Sam, come on up. Have a bowl of dessert.
Do some sort of-
I'm going to-
He doesn't really need to be, we're just going.
No.
Sam, you can sit anywhere up here.
What is, what is this?
Rob's chair, we have chairs, so you know.
You, you get mine, I can shovel off.
In this mother of a mouth.
I just went off the crack.
Well, it's gonna be his anyway. So. Well, he can look at whatever, I don't think he, yeah, he just has those right now. Right, that's his, that's his, there's something you can forget. Here, here is a bag. There's a mouse, I don't use a mouse.
She kept the charger, and it, no.
You know what says over in front of us?
You know people do that.
Property of Wilton's.
No one cares, ask Justin.
Yeah, the parents do when they get the bill, why don't they charge fifty dollars, Hadley? I don't know, I know.
Instead, kids just like hoard them, if they find them, they're just extras. They're not some, they're not someone's cords, they're just extras, and now they have an extra.
That's great. All right, all right, call this meeting over. Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Gerrels.
Big same deal.
Adam Secretary.
I'm Barrett.
Here. Here. Here.
Rob Metzger. Garrett Wine. Sam Wilson.
Here. All right. Agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agendas presented? I have nothing to.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Moving second to approve the agenda. All those, or any further discussion? That's Robert's rules. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
I forgot to get the.
You got your oath?
I forgot to get the. Let me see if I can pull it up real quick. Well, that was really stupid. That's.
I can say, we can make one up. Sam, we need you to bring some stability to this group. Why start now?
I'll see you.
We're like a 3D printed house. We, it'll have structure. I'll just be knocking corners out there.
I read that there's a policy that hasn't written in there.
I think I'm in the right area here.
Do you see a reason why we can't elect a board president, vice president while you're waiting, Joy? We need to elect a president for this group?
I'm voting Tim Barrett.
Second.
Any further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Tim Barrett being president?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You had a good handshake, so.
There you go.
I prefer a handshake. He's cool with that.
So Tim, you are now in charge of the meeting. You have to take nominations for vice president from the floor.
He's all packed up and ready. Move to your seat.
Do what?
You have to sit next to Joe.
You can stay in there tonight if you, you can sit wherever you want. I don't blame you.
There is a way we do that.
Uh, we need to elect board president and vice president. So can I get a nomination?
I nominate Terry to be the vice president.
Tim, you can still.
Can I still do that? I second that.
I'm not sure how to take.
Okay, well, I need to say all in favor.
Hi.
Welcome aboard. Again.
Again.
Hey, Joy, Sam, it's ready. Joy.
All three of them.
We all get to do it.
Yeah, we have to like.
Yeah, like.
I'm doing the same thing. Do I have to do it?
Okay. Uh, Tim, or Tom Fitzer. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of school board member in the Wilton Community School District as, as now and thereafter required by law?
I will.
Tim Barrett, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of school board member in the Wilton Community School District as now and thereafter required by law?
I will.
And Sam Wilson, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of school board member in the Wilton Community School District as now and thereafter required by law?
I will.
Right.
Welcome aboard, Sam. We're glad to have you. Tommy, congratulations as well.
Well, thank you.
Tim?
Thank you.
Glad to have you back. All right.
Hey. Number five, adopt rules and procedures.
As board policy states, it's my recommendation to adopt Robert's Rules of Order as our rules and procedures.
I'll make a motion to adopt. I'll second.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. All right.
Jump right in there.
There you go.
What did Linda always say afterwards? We all.
Say any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. Just use Robert's Rules of Order to adopt Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes, exactly.
I think a lot of Robert's Rules. Right there.
Lots of rules.
Okay, we're on to number six. Set time, date, and place for regular meetings.
What we've done in the past is having the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. The second Wednesday of the month being the regular board meeting at 5:30. And the fourth Wednesday of the month in a work session date. The majority at a five, most of the time will meet for the work session. Okay? But they always are as needed. There may be months where we don't, as board members observe, know that. But we still reserve that time as a work session date. The only ones that are guaranteed is that second Wednesday of the month with the fourth being a work session. If that still works for the group.
Yeah, I'm busy.
Days like today, yeah.
Starting in my calendar, like as a reoccurring event, let's, let's not go messing with that.
So if you want, you can say as presented, as a motion, as presented by Mr. Burnett. And then you don't have to repeat all that.
I like a motion as presented by Mr. Burnett. Maintain the current dates.
There you go.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number seven, appointing board secretary.
Joy Gerrell has held that role for a while. It's up to you as a board if you'd like her to continue.
I definitely would.
I'd make a motion that we.
And Joy.
Now, Joy, I have a question for you and I've always meant to ask this. Is it easier for you if one person does a motion and one person seconds? Cause we're all over the place all the time. Does it matter to you? Okay.
That keeps it spicy for.
Just making sure. Preference? Nope, I'm fine. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Appointment of board secretary.
Joy.
Treasure.
Now we're on, yes.
See, I'm gonna start crossing these off.
No, you're fine. See, you can appreciate Linda's stress.
Oh, she has no idea.
That would be Angela.
I wanna jump in. I wanna do, I gotta keep my mouth. You're just, you're just a bystander right now. You gotta hang, eat some pudding.
Hey, no comments from the public.
You're doing.
No comments from the public.
It's not public forum.
Right.
I need a motion.
Okay, did you, someone said, sorry, I wasn't.
Angela, Angela Treasure.
I make a motion that we appoint Angela's treasure.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, number nine.
Okay, now that's on your computer and basically it shows, and I'll read it to you if you're, if you're so, so it's okay. We have to annually approve our depositories and the maximum balance in effect. So the first depositary is Community Bank and Trust in Wilton. Maximum balance, 8.5 million. Was in 2020 and the maximum balance under this resolution, tonight, we'd like to raise that to 10 million. UMB Bank in Kansas City, Missouri. Effect prior to the resolution on January 1st of 2020 was three and a half million. The maximum effect tonight would be 5 million. And then ICEJET, which is Wells Fargo in Des Moines, the maximum balance prior to January 1st of 20 was 5 million. And the maximum balance in effect under this resolution is 10 million. So that being said, a resolution takes individual board approval. So we need a motion and a second, and then there'll be a roll call vote from Joy.
And the reason for the increase amount, I don't care they're increasing, I'm just curious, is the understanding, why are they changing going up?
Angela, do you want to answer that or do you want me to take stab at it?
We're supposed, we are supposed, when the auditor came, came through, we were supposed to do that annually. And this last year, something got moved from November to December or October and it was missed last year. But I went in and reviewed all the balances that we have. And this is to cover us if something, something happens or goes wrong at the bank. So those are the amounts that I came up with. Um, I did the same with ICEJET because depending on the interest rate in the past, I know Stacy has moved money out of community to ICEJET so we can get that interest rate. So I wanted that amount to be for those to match. And the UMB is based off of where we stand with our, our bond, our revenue bonds and so that we're covered there.
Furthermore, every year, fortunately, we've gotten more money from the state per student. And so our, our maximum goes up. And you know what? If we have somebody that donates to school, something.
Let's put it.
Gotta have the maximum to put it in. Yep.
I make a motion to accept as presented. Can I jump in here quick with just one dumb question? Absolutely. These institutions insured for those amounts?
Gather all FDIC insured. That's a great question.
I just didn't know.
Yep, yep, no. That's not a dumb question.
Yeah.
All right. Still make the motion to approve as presented.
All right. We'll call vote. Tim Barrett.
Yes.
Tom Fitzer.
Yes.
Tara Oyn.
Yes.
And Sam Wilson.
Yes.
Okay, number ten. Uh, what is that? Official publication?
Recommendation is new with the Advocate News.
Why should we stick with the Advocate News?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations attending.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Legal counsel.
Counselor.
Uh, my recommendation is to continue. If you remember, we, we changed recently. Brett Nitschke went from Lynch, Dallas to Alers Cooney. So my recommendation, we go with Alers Cooney as our legal counsel. He's out of Des Moines and Brett Nitschke is our point of contact.
Make a motion that we retain.